Well, good morning. We have a quorum, so we're going to call to order the study session. Coachella Valley Water District, January 21, 2025, here in Coachella. And we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Good morning, and I will note, Mr. President, for the record, that Director Nelson Woods initially scheduled to join us remotely, but he is no longer doing that just for agenda-noticing purposes. President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada will also be absent for today's meeting. Director Bianco.
Here.
And Director Aguilar.
Here.
And again, Director Nelson absent as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a reminder, this is a study session, so we will not be taking any action. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time? Don't see a lot of public out there. If we get anyone, they can, they can comment later. First item of discussion or information is California's new cross-connection control regulation. Morning.
Good morning. Well, good morning, members of the board and fellow team members. For the record, my name is Ruben Rivera. I'm the Assistant Director of Operations overseeing the domestic branch. Today, Dan Charlton and I will be presenting on the new cross-connection regulations. I'll be covering the background and technical portion of the presentation, and then Dan Charlton will be covering the finance. Our last slide is covered by Paul.
Sorry about that. Do I have control of the present?
Yeah, you have to click there.
This one right here? So the objective of today's meeting is to present an overview of the new regulation, to present an overview of the number of additional backflow devices that are gonna be required because of this, the fiscal impacts, and then we're gonna hopefully recommend some funding options for consideration. Today's meeting, we're gonna cover the basics of what is a cross-connection and go over the public health risks associated with them. We're gonna do a side-by-side comparison of the old regulate, excuse me, the old policy elements versus the new policy elements. Then we're gonna take a deeper dive into backflow prevention assemblies, hazard assessments. Then we're gonna specifically look at CVWD's implementation strategy, our compliance requirements along with deadlines coming up, the specific impacts to CVWD and program funding options. Cross-connection control is a public safety measure that protects water quality and public health by preventing water from going backwards into the drinking water system. So when water leaves the customer's property and goes into our drinking water system, that's called a backflow occurrence, and that's what this policy is trying to prevent.
So do you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. So there's two conditions, and it's gonna go through, through more detail in here, but usually backflow is broken up into two areas, back pressure and back siphonage. Basically, if the user's premise or the customer's property has some type of pressure tank or their own water system producing more pressure than ours, that's gonna create backflow into our system, leading to possible contamination. Or if our system has a drop-in pressure for a large mainline leak or additional demand, that can cause back siphonage and pulling the water in the customer's property into our system.
So the average customer doesn't have that?
The average customer does not have, does not require backflow protection.
Okay, so we're talking for those customers that have a pressure tank or...
There, there's a whole list of customers that have identified known hazards on, on their property.
And this is a new regulation?
This is an update to the regulation. Cross-connection regulations have been in California's safe water regulations for decades. So this is an update.
Okay, if it was, if it was a regulation for decades, why haven't we done it, why haven't we done it earlier?
Because specifically, there's updates in this one. We do, we do cross-connection, we do backflow protection. There's updates in this one that's gonna cause impacts.
Okay. They're asking us to do more. Because there's a law that says we have to do more?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's a new law?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So this regulation is also called the Cross-Connection Control Policy Handbook. Became effective July 1, 2024, and it replaces the longstanding California Title 17 cross-connection regs. And it basically aims to strengthen existing measures. So per the policy handbook, a cross-connection is defined as "any connection, actual or potential, between a public water system and any source containing liquid, gas, or other substances, not from an approved water supply." So if you look at the picture on the right, the customer's property has an irrigation hooked up to the potable water system, also has a fire protection system, and those are cross-connections on, on premise where if we were to have... I don't know if this works.
Ask the manager.
No, okay. If we were to have a emergency mainline break on our system, where system pressures can drop, there's a potential for back siphonage there. Or potential for backflow, and that's exactly what we're trying to prevent. Backflow into our water system can lead to contamination of the drinking water, introducing harmful substances, can lead to serious health issues and waterborne diseases. So the regulation that's been in place, we've been following Title 17 cross-connection regs. That's been in place since 1987, so it's about 38 years. That specific regulation had minor updates in the year 2000, but really focused on the basics of backflow prevention and haven't had any updates in, in about 25 years.
Do we identify homes in, in, at different elevations? I'm just thinking for like the siphonage thing. If you're, if there's a home up on a, on a mountain, you know, higher up, would they have a greater potential for the, you know, backflow?
Not necessarily. We, we do look at, you know, homes being served by different pressure zones. And if they have multiple meters, we gotta make sure we put the proper level of protection on there, you know, avoiding water flowing through their property and through one meter, out through the other.
Right, okay.
I think, Ruben, if I'm not mistaken, there's new fire code regulations that require residential homes of a certain size to have internal fire suppression systems. So the requirement then would seem to increase the number of these backflow preventers we'll see out at single-family residences.
You are absolutely correct. Yeah, there's gonna be an impact there that will require some install additional devices.
So every water district who has domestic customers in the state of California is having to deal with this?
That's correct. Looking at Title 17 regs compared to the new policy handbook, the six original elements carried over except for they were enhanced. So we've highlighted the number two and three, hazard assessments and backflow prevention, because of the enhancements they did is gonna cause impact to CVWD. And then we also highlighted seven through 10, just identifying that those are completely new. I'll just touch on those real quick. So the use of certified testers and specialists, that's been our practice for decades. And we're currently in full compliance with the language in the new regulation. Backflow incident response, our current SOPs and procedures align with the regulation. Again, no impact. We, we will just have to submit our plan to the Division of Drinking Water. Public outreach and education, we're meeting some of the components. There's a couple items that we need to address, but our communications team is well aware of it, and they have a plan to bring us into compliance, and I have no concerns about meeting those requirements there. Local, local entity coordination, the, the efforts that we're currently doing fall within compliance as well. So really, the two areas that we're gonna be impacted is hazard assessments and backflow prevention, and we're gonna take a deeper dive in those right now.
Are you saying that the existing staffing is adequate to address the new testing requirements?
Well...
I don't know you've gotten there yet.
Yeah, well, the thing is, they're not all in yet, so once they're in, we will have to evaluate. Meaning, right now, it's gonna take time to install that large number of devices. So it'll probably be a phased approach, if any.
Are they giving us a timeline?
Yes. So... So in the policy handbook, the minimum standard, the minimum level protection was raised. Per the policy handbook, it states that each public water system must ensure its distribution system is protected with at least a double check for customers with a fire protection system within 10 years of the policy handbook adoption. So the valve on the top right-hand corner is the, is a basic single check, and that's what we use to protect against fire protection systems. Since this update came out, now the minimum standard is either a double check or an RP. Most likely, it's gonna be a double check for our residential users and an RP device for our commercial users. Now, the device on the bottom right, I'll kinda go over it a little bit. The difference is that it has a visual indication if it's failing. It has a relief valve on the bottom where the water will dump. Essentially, it's an air gap. If there's a reverse flow condition, the water will dump through the bottom of it. It's also much more sophisticated. It has two independently operated spring checks, two isolation valves, and four test ports. That valve is required to be tested at minimum annually to make sure that all the components are within tolerance. It's also, has to be tested by certified testers that have to undergo regular training, written, oral, and hands-on proctored exams to maintain their certification.
So this, the bottom right, how big is that? How big is that new one? I mean, they're probably different sizes, but...
Yeah, for...
But I mean, some of them, I mean, they're massive, right? Aren't they?
Yes. Well, the residential ones, they're probably about, they stick up above the ground. They're probably about two feet long, 12 inches high. And one inch or two inch in diameter piping for, yeah.
So that's pretty big for considering the pipes only one inch. So but then for a commercial service where you have, let's say, a four-inch or something?
Yeah, they're gonna range from four-inch through 12-inch.
They could be huge, right?
They're gonna be large, but they, so the current devices are in a vault, and they'll fit within that footprint, except they're gonna be above ground. So the vault's probably like a three by five, and they're currently below ground, yeah.
So everybody who has a fire sprinkler, fire sprinklers in their business or house would, would have one of these?
Will require one.
Will require one.
Within 10 years, yes.
Well, they already have one, correct?
They have a single check.
They have a single check, okay. And so we're gonna come in and put this double check?
Yes.
So a customer who doesn't have a fire sprinkler protection does not have a, does not have this?
That is correct.
Unless they have...
Tank.
A tank, yeah. So every single business has a fire sprinklers in the Coachella Valley, I would imagine?
There may be some private... There may also be some private homes that have an irrigation system, which also has a backflow preventer attached to it to protect the internal domestic consumption from any external contamination that might occur. I mean, I've, I've got one at my residence, so...
And we're doing that at our cost? But we're gonna get to that. Who pays? How we pay, right?
That's correct.
And there's no funding from the California for this?
So, so currently, when, if there is a, a risk identified, staff will go out there and assess that risk and determine if a backflow preventer is required. For example, in the O'Hill Sky Valley area, we've been identified that, hey, there, there's a possibly a nursery operation where they have a well on site with maybe chemical injection, and there's that possibility for them to interconnect. And so those homes, we would identify, say, this is the level of risk, it's gonna require an RP device, and then we would bill them for that and install it.
So is this the kind of thing that's, that's a, sorry, that's a self-reporting kind of thing? Or do we know where all these properties are just by inventory? I mean, how, you know, how is the customer going to know whether or not they may be subject to it? Because not everybody is as sophisticated as these folks up here.
Yeah. That's gonna be part of the education component of this new regulation?
Are you gonna get to that?
Maybe briefly, but we're gonna be doing surveys and hazard assessments, so that's gonna, there's gonna be a lot of awareness around that. But most customers, you know, the residential track home, the typical customer in the track home, is not gonna require any additional protection. It's not gonna require an upgrade of a device.
Yeah, so if somebody has a well, let's say a domestic well and a connection to our domestic system, that would be an automatic, wouldn't it? Would that?
Yeah.
Cause they're, obviously, their piping in the home or wherever is gonna be connected to both systems.
So there are a lot of instances where it's automatic. We have a table in our ordinance that specifically outlines, if you have this, you get this level of protection. And then there's other ones that are not so clear, where we may require a specialist to go and do an assessment, and they will determine the level of protection required.
Okay. I, I don't know how we charge anybody, to tell you the truth. Yeah, well...
Well, we're required to do it, so there's gotta be a revenue stream somewhere.
I know, I mean, but they...
Shall I continue?
Yes.
Okay.
On the edge of my seat.
So for hazard assessments, you know, there, the new regulation requires more information, more detailed assessments. So the purpose of the hazard assessments is just to identify the potential cross-connections, assess the risk level, and implement the necessary controls to prevent contamination. So per the policy handbook, it clearly states that the public water system is required to perform initial hazard assessments on all service connections. However, it does not specify a deadline to complete the initial assessments. So the, the state water board had, has put out a FAQ sheet. And what it states in there is that due to the vast size and variations of water systems across the state, each public water system must determine their ability to complete the hazard assessments based on, in a timely manner, based on their available resources. And so with that said, CVWD must outline its strategy for completing hazard assessments in our proposed cross-connection control plan. So moving on to our specific implementation strategy, July 1, 2025 is our first deadline coming up where we have to submit a cross-connection control plan. Our ordinance also need to be updated to align with the new standards, the language, you know, remove Title 17 references and insert policy handbook and other minimum requirements. As far as public outreach, local entity coordination, we're working towards that. The one thing that they specify is that we have to educate the public, our staff, and our customers on the importance of backflow protection. And as far as hazard assessments, the, the, the requirements were updated, so we are trying to determine how to roll out the initial hazard assessments. And then we also gotta develop a business process to do a follow-up or a subsequent, because we have to do a follow-up hazard assessment whenever there's a business ownership change or whenever the water use changes, and so we have to do a follow-up hazard assessment.
Have we ever had a contamination before?
There's been cross-connections identified where we mitigated, yes.
They're not always known, but there are elements that lead to the discovery. We had a residential unit that had somehow connected their irrigation system to the nearby golf course, which was getting water out of one of their lakes, and the lake water had color additive to it. And so when colored water started coming out of their kitchen faucet, they called us to say we had a, we had a problem. And so we went out, investigated, found the cross-connect, and basically told them, you need, you need to fix this. It's on your side of the system. But, you know, stuff like that happens.
They had hotel rooms at the Lacina Hotel that were hooked into their irrigation system.
We told them...
Remember that?
Yeah.
They like, they reconfigured the irrigation system and the shower didn't work anymore.
I mean, stuff happens every day out there that we're not necessarily aware of, because people will make modifications to either their, mostly it's their irrigation system. But sometimes a golf course will put a restroom facility up where the only irrigation available is, the only system, water system available is their irrigation. So, you know, it's, it's stuff that we tend to find, you know, I'm...
And they might have been on a well for a decade or two, and then, and then we switch over to non-potable, and the connection's still there, and now they're getting non-potable in, in where they think they're...
So specifically in that scenario where the customer hooked up golf course irrigation to their drinking water system, we, we told them that they need to sever the connection or we're gonna install a device at their cost, because that, that device is, need to be installed because of actions that they did or activities they have on their property, and it's gonna put our system and other customers at risk. So that's why we told them that they have to pay for it. Moving on to our deadlines and compliance requirements. So the cross-connection control plan that's due July 1, 2025, part of that, we have to specify how we're gonna come into compliance with all 10 elements of the policy handbook. And staff's been working on that. I'm really confident that it's gonna be ready really soon, and we're not gonna have any issues with submitting that plan. But more challenging is our deadline on July 1, 2034, where we must ensure that all our single-check devices that are feeding fire protection systems are upgraded to a testable device. So speaking a little bit more about the impacts there, we currently have 1,800 commercial customers ranging in size from three inch to, to 12 inch that have a single check and need to be upgraded to a testable device. And on the residential front, we have 8,000 homes that have fire protection systems that need to be upgraded as well. And I'm gonna pass it on to Dan Charlton for the remainder of the presentation.
For the easy part, right?
How do you pay for it? Okay. We have nine years, correct? We have nine years.
Yes. So just for clarity, the last thing we wanna be up here doing is communicating another unfunded, state-mandated compliance requirement. But here we are. The only benefit, I think, compared to others, is that we do have nine years. So we have time to be able to be strategic in our implementation and our construction, and I think that's a huge benefit. So I'm gonna talk briefly about our draft implementation program that will be inserted into our plan, that is due July 1, and how we intend on potentially meeting that requirement in eight years rather than nine years, so we give ourselves a year afloat for the unknown. There's gonna be a lot of different entities competing for all these devices across California. So that'll be interesting. It'll be like COVID 2.0. So it's gonna be a very complicated, but a very strategic process that we're gonna try to implement. And then I'll just discuss potential funding options, just to throw it out there, to give you guys something to consider toward the end. And then on the last slide, I'll turn it over to Carla to talk about miscellaneous fee information on how we move forward with that, so. So firstly, this strategy shows the, the residential and the commercial. This is our best guess, based on the data we have, of how many devices need to be upgraded. So as you can see, there's more than 8,000 residential devices. If there is a good thing, 97% of them are one-inch, which are only 44% of the cost of a two-inch, so I'll take that as a small win. And on the residential side, about 95% are between four and eight-inch, which again, is cheaper than the 10 and the 12. But if you look down at the bottom of the page, you'll see that the amount of $45.3 million is necessary to implement this program over our eight-year strategy, and that's in $20.24. This is a very busy slide, but I'll start with the commercial. So literally, our program has, along the top is the 1,803 commercial devices that need to be upgraded over the eight years. So we literally took that, all the different sizes up top, divided them by eight years, and then found out the actual cost and then submitted them in. So, long story longer, it's 40 million right now. If we were able to implement them all at one point in time, that is not feasible. So year one, it is literally 1/8 to 600, or 75 for the four-inch, times the 16,300 to get us 1.23 million. And that being said, our strategy is, on the commercial side, is to take the 1,800 and do 225 a year, and that might not sound like a lot, but that's a full crew, four-to-five-man crew doing one a day for the entire year. That is, that is how much work is involved in this. We also put a 5% inflator on it, not only because of the increases in labor, but also because the competition and the increases in the devices over time. We feel that this is conservative. So the $39.9 in $20.24 is 47.6, I think that is? Jeez, I'm kidding. In eight years. The monthly component, I'll talk about that later when we talk about the funding strategy, so...
So, so isn't it possible that whoever manufactures these things, they're gonna achieve economies of scale because, you know, there's gonna be tens of thousands of new orders that they didn't have before?
It is possible.
Maybe the price will go down.
I...
It's gonna go up.
That is possible. There is competi, I mean, you know, supply...
It's the entire state of California that has to do this.
It is supply and demand, and that is a possibility. There's also a possibility to know that because it's mandated, that these people will know it's mandated and the costs will increase.
What would you do if you were the only guy who had lettuce? If everybody needed it? I'm assuming there's more than one manufacturer.
Well, they could also be manufactured overseas, and then tariffs become an issue, right?
Yes. So to your point, agreed. Supply and demand, it could go down, and that would be great. That's a better story than what we're telling right now. So on the residential side, similar slide.
What was the monthly on that? Did I miss that? What would that mean?
I'm gonna talk about that later. On the funding slide, that's, that's our, yeah. If you give me a moment, I'll get back to that, right? It's complicated. So on the residential side, same thing, again, 97% of the one-inch. We can do about 1,000 of those a year of the 8,054 that's required. So again, an eight-year program, 5% escalator, but it's 5.67 million in year one, which equates to 6.47. Yeah, 6.47 over time. Yeah, I know, I don't wanna turn around, but I get it. So, you know, it's a lot of work to do on top of our normal stuff. To Ruben's point, do we need more labor? I don't know. We gotta think about the additional costs of the, these devices. We gotta think about catina. We gotta think about all those things. So at first glance, year one, we're gonna say no. If we're struggling, we're gonna have to have another conversation and adjust accordingly, so...
So the cost is really, over the, you're thinking, over the next nine years, is gonna be 54 million and not 45?
Yeah, 54 million over eight years, yeah. Year nine, I'm leaving as afloat, as I said. This is just a slide leading to the other slide that starts part of our funding program, but it's just the, again, existing costs with a 5% escalator order over time, which leads us to a thought process, and this came from Carla, is that if we really have an eight-year program and we were gonna require them to fund it on their own, let's just say, that typically a five-year payment plan would be the maximum. We wouldn't do it over eight years. A lot of things can happen over eight years. So, long story longer, in, after year five, we would have collected 47 million and only spent 27, and we'd use the additional 20 million to fund the last three years. So this is kind of the thought process of how we could recover those costs over time if we were to put somebody on some type of payment plan. I did the same thing with residential, 5% escalator, and again, we would need 1.29 million and recover the other 2 million, 2.7 million over the last three years.
Dan, are the, is that actual cost?
That is material and labor, actual cost on what it costs us now in $20.24.
Are we restricted by law if we decided to spread it out on the domestic fund through everybody?
That brings us to this slide. So we look at four different funding thoughts, I guess I would say. Putting it on the domestic water rate, it's actually more than 5%. Putting it on the domestic water rate, it's actually more than five percent. I I when I look at Carla's next presentation, it's probably a little more like seven or eight percent. But basically, we discounted that very early on um because um it the benefit only applies to the nine thousand eight hundred or so customers. Out of the hundred fourteen thousand. So is it right for the other a hundred and, you know, four thousand customers to have to pay because of this situation? Probably not. Uh the other thing that was a little uh came into play is that after eight years, you don't need the money anymore for this program. Cause in theory, it's done. And at the same time that we implement this program, all the new developments, it'll be turned over to the developer. And they'll be required to do it uh moving forward. So and then when you think about the competition for capex and opex overall. You know, Sun City, Talavera, Chromium Six, it just, it doesn't make sense to put on the domestic water rate, in our opinion. We looked at the tax rule. Tax rule works well for sewer. It does not work well if it's not a properly, property related fee. Especially if it's a regulatory fee. Carla worked directly with BBK, uh and we we discounted that as not a proper option. Or not a feasible option.
So we can individually go onto individual bills and add a monthly fee on?
Yes, so that's.
I mean, this really isn't 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 fair to 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 in to any of these customers, to me. I I I mean, this is not right. It's like saying, you know, the new regulations are are fire sprinklers and that everybody who doesn't have them have to put them in.
Again.
Then they did, they didn't do that, right? They said every new building has to have it, you know? You know, it's like solar. They they said all new buildings have to have solar. They didn't say everybody has to have solar. I mean.
Again.
This is gonna be a drain on some people who can't afford it and some businesses.
An unfunded mandate um requirement going back, which is what this is doing, we agree wholeheartedly. It it's a difficult situation. It puts every ent- public entity, water system in California in a tough situation. So we looked at cost recovery, to your point. I'm like, okay, well, what would that look like? So regarding the residential, if we added a device charge to the property owner, if the property owner lives in the house. Uh over five years to recover the cost, it would only be thirteen dollars a month, which is a hundred fifty six dollars a year. Okay, that that wouldn't, that would seem reasonable on the residential side of things. The problem comes into play when it's a tenant. Well, you can't put it on the tenant's water bill for the owner's owner's.
Property.
Property. So, you know, we talked to Scott Buritt and maybe we do, we could do a one time invoice for six hundred and fifty dollars. It's just something to consider. Um we have to find a way for those uh to not put it on a water bill for those that are are renters or tenants.
Why, why can't you do that? I don't understand why you can't.
Because then the tenant's paying for the owner's property requirement.
It's a five year payment for a long term asset.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem practical or fair.
I mean, it seem, it seems like you. Seems like a logical way to do it. I get why you're saying you can't do it, but.
We can do whatever the board decides. I just think that it's something we need to consider uh very strongly.
Cause the the landlord's gonna try to recover it from the tenant anyways.
Well, well, that's why the whole intent of if you invoice, if you invoice the property owner directly for for a six hundred and fifty dollars. In twenty twenty four dollars and said, hey, you need to pay this bill, in theory, he's gonna turn it over to whoever's renting and add that on to the rent. So there is that construct that might potentially work without question. Uh when you get to the commercial side, it's a whole different ballgame. So uh for a four inch meter, it's basically thirty nine hundred dollars a year for five years. I mean, that's almost twenty thousand dollars for a four inch meter. And, you know, that might be a small strip mall or something of the sort. Um so to put on a fee of thirty nine hundred dollars a year onto their water bill, which again, they can have tenants. Um is a little perplexing. Um and if you notice, again, we only have seventy uh ten inch uh in our entire system, in theory. Um but it would be eighty four hundred dollars a month for five years to be able to.
So what's the useful life of one of these devices?
I have no idea.
Ten years?
Twenty years, I would say.
It better be more than that.
I mean, I, it just seems maybe arbitrary why we we're automatically going to the five year thing, cause that's creating some issues here.
Yeah, it it's we're, it's not, we're not going to, we're just providing options.
I know, but the op- maybe we should see an option for a ten year or even fifteen or twenty year.
The the problem is, you think people selling homes and all that, you'd have to put a lien on, you know, five years. I don't know why it seems to be the financial uh uh sweet spot, but it seems to be. But that's, that's definitely an opportunity without question. But, you know, is it different for a small strip mall to pay? You know, this cost over five years or Walmart, you give them a bill for thirty thousand and they pay it once and they're done type of thing? It is a whole different ballgame depending on who the who the commercial uh customer is. And then, you know, one could argue, do we need more labor over time? Probably, especially with Cuttino and the additional devices and all those type of things. But one could argue, well, the existing labor is already in our cost. Um you you could just charge them for the device. I'm not suggesting that, but you could just charge them for the dot device and incorporate the labor into our normal costs. Again, not suggesting it, but it's something to consider. And then lastly, which, you know, again. Uh I think in twenty twenty four, we got sixty one million e- or so in property taxes. A lot of that is considered nondiscretionary, like stormwater and a large portion of canal. But we have in, you know, some type of range of forty percent of that sixty million is discretionary, but it's already allocated. There are reasons that they are in the certain funds, but I mean, there could be a potential that we defray a portion of those costs or something of the sort. Should the board decide um with some type of discretionary tax contribution. So that being said, again, we are not happy to be up here about an unfunded mandate. It's, I'm glad we have time to be able to implement it, but we can't just defer because we don't have the staffing to say, hey, we're gonna do it all in year eight. That's not even a possibility.
Are there any other options besides that double check? I mean, that's inexpensive. Did they give us?
Ruben, do you wanna, my understanding it, well, it's it's just a level of safety, right? A single check um does does help. I mean, it's a ch- it's a check valve.
But that's no longer allowed?
Not under this program. Um they are, they're going from single tech to double check.
My question is, yeah, I mean, is that really the only option they gave? Is you have to comply with this? And it has to be a double check?
Yeah, double check is the minimum level.
Minimum.
Yeah, so going up would be would be an RP. And those are even those more expensive.
Even more expensive.
About seventy five percent more.
Yes, it's really unfortunate, uh but here's the situation we're in, and the plan is due in six months.
Check valve guy is probably the same guy as the Panera Bread guy.
I got her made, yeah.
Wouldn't surprise me.
So um with that, um the the only next, oh, there's one more component. The monthly fee that we do put on the domestic rate, current uh backflow devices, which I think, what do we have, eleven thousand four hundred?
Yes.
We have eleven thousand four hundred backflow devices. We do charge a fee on a on a separate rate on a water bill. If you have a backflow device on your property and it's twelve dollars. The miscellaneous fee needs to be updated, which Carla will talk about in a moment, but we already do charge a similar fee to this residential fee. For the operation and maintenance and or testing of that device existing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carla.
So it seems to me. So real, real fast, I I I I do, I would like to see um what it would look like where we separated the labor out. And we just charged the device. And I would like to see something that looked like ten years, like John suggested.
Or longer.
Or longer to just see.
Sure.
If we can spread this thing out.
I mean, you might even get to the point where it's a permanent charge like the check valve. It's just.
Yeah.
If you have this device, there's a charge. And then design that charge so that it covers the program costs.
They already have a charge, right?
They have an operation, maintenance, testing charge, but not an installation charge. And this primarily is for the installation. So they will still have, they, these people actually still have the other charge, which she'll talk to. But I don't know that if we're, if we're mandated to install them in nine years, I don't, should they be paying for something after, yeah, I guess we have dead service.
I mean, that's the other question is, you know, when do they start paying? Cause some of them are gonna get them in year one and some of them are gonna get them in year eight.
And that's why we did the escalator and we merged them and we took the average because, yeah, I mean, it's it's a difficult situation. And really, on a residential side, the only real alternative is defray the cost, whether it's labor and or discretionary. Or just bill them upfront and say, hey.
Do we, is it too early because everyone's going through the same process with other districts to know what other people are doing?
Yeah, that was gonna be my point. Are we tracking what other?
We are working closely. We're working with local agencies. Um yeah, it's mandated by law, so everybody's required to do it. We are looking at what other people are doing, yeah.
And so the city of Coachella, city of Palm Springs, city of Indio, they're all gonna have to do the same thing.
Correct.
Yeah, it's not, um, you know, so it's gonna be what you probably don't wanna hear, but talking to other agencies. You know, they're they're putting this a hundred percent on the customer. You know, the they, you know, they're, the water purveyor is just overseeing this program. It's their job to ensure that the water system's safe. And so they're enforcing it on the customer. And through their ordinance, they're saying, well, we can discontinue service if this device is not installed. And and the responsibility to purchase the device and have it installed is on the customer.
Yeah, I, let me just offer a couple of thoughts here um on the separate labor. Um there's an opportunity cost, right? So we're staffed now to do a certain level of effort, provide a certain level of service. This is new. We take a crew dedicated to this. Something else is not gonna be done. And we need to look at that before I can sign, before I'll sign off on that recommendation.
Like, we are just getting our preventative maintenance program to a to a point where we feel that it's, you know, at the ninety five percent level, which is fantastic. We've been trying to do that for ten years now. So it would defray some other.
I I I get it. It doesn't make sense that we're gonna be able to use in-house people to do this y- year for the for the next eight years.
Yeah, I mean, but.
That's what we're talking about, right?
But I mean.
Two hundred and twenty five, that's one a day.
Right.
You know, it's it's that's, you know.
We just had the a a great meeting with Carrie and I and others with Cuttino yesterday, and we know that they have. We only have eleven thousand four hundred in a in a thousand square miles backflows now, and they're gonna require nineteen hundred. So they're gonna have eighteen percent or whatever it may be of all the backflows in the entire valley are gonna be in one square mile. As compared to a thousand square miles. So it's a whole new ballgame for Olivia and that group. And then as we merge with the domestic group, what does that look like in the future as far as labor? It's definitely gonna require an increase that we will obviously pass the cost on to Cuttino.
So that that's because of their dual system?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with spreading it to ten years. Um I'm sure there's gonna be impacts for that, but I I think that might be possible as well. So the other point I wanted to kind of bring up is the concern about when do we start charging customer for this? So recognizing that we already know how many we need, we probably oughta go to the market and buy as many as we can. Once they're in inventory, that is a cost that can be passed on to the customer. Because we're holding that device for ultimate installation at that property. What we don't wanna do is get caught at the back end by saying, oh, well, we didn't buy enough devices, so now we're having to wait for the manufacturer. I don't know that that's gonna be a legitimate excuse as far as the state is concerned, because they're already given us ten years to get there. So, you know, I I would kind of encourage us to, once the board is comfortable, to go out and buy as many as we can. And then just start charging customers because that is a cost we'll have to carry. I know that's probably in what you don't wanna hear, but there's, there's no exception to getting around this requirement.
Yeah, and on the residential side, uh that makes a lot of sense. I mean, the residential is only six point five million dollars. And seventy percent of that is the cost of materials. So for five million, you could buy all the devices you really could. On the commercial, it's a different ballgame.
For commercial, there's a lot of commercial out there that through three or four hundred dollars a month is gonna be a real problem.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's.
Agreed. Well, especially with what commercial's gone through the last four or five years with tenants and pricing, uh you know, it's a new world there, so. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Carla for a moment.
You know, and there's probably, I I actually have a whole video somebody made me on check valves. I don't know if anyone's seen it. But one of our customers that uh was very fed up about what they had to do for check valves. And so they may, I have a whole video. It has uh it has music to it and everything about check valves. But I think there's a sense among people who are forced to pay a lot of money for this stuff. That it's, they're paying money to protect us, to protect CBWD's system. But but it's to protect us from them. I mean, again, cause they have a use that needs, we need protection from. But uh it's not something people are excited to pay for. Let's put it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just to to clarify, this um additional cost cannot be included in the domestic cost of service studies. So even within the current language and the way the current rates are structured, um backflow revenues and expenses um should not be a part. Of the overall domestic rates. And so we did get clarification and went back and forth with Lutfi. Talking about what's protecting the entire domestic system. And he said, no, it's um a requirement. And and I'll read what he said specifically. He said such a cost could not be included in the domestic cost of service study. The need for and the use of a backflow device is due to the connections of only certain customers. And um and then I had given him some language regarding specifically the backflow devices and how um those costs and revenues are removed from the rate studies. And and not included. And so that's when we started um trying to identify other potential funding sources. If we go back to the previous slide, I'm not sure, Dan, did you mention the curtailment revenue?
I did not.
Okay. So one of the other um considerations when we talk about just discretionary funding in general. Is not only the property tax revenue, which we know if we shift, then it could have a potential impact on other rates. Um but also the curtailment uh revenue um being held within the canal fund. As Costolo alluded to during the last meeting, we haven't allocated that funding. And that could potentially offset or reduce some of the impacts to our customers if we utilize that as one time funding. So.
There's a whole list of priority items that would compete for discretionary cash like that.
We're not, we're not looking, we're not looking for a place to put that.
Well, this is very discreet customers that we're talking about here. So it's not really a district wide.
Wait, are you talking about using that money to advance um the purchase of this equipment? Or are you talking about using that money to compensate the installation cost?
To offset some of the potential cost, right. So one of the first things we have to do is update our fees. Um as Jim mentioned, we have to buy new devices and then we would pass on those costs to the customers um to a certain degree, right? As we update those fees, we have both the monthly fee, as um Dan was saying, the twelve dollars per month. The last known update um was in two thousand and eight. It may even be a little bit longer than that, so it's been about seventeen years. We're not sure if that twelve dollars a month for um the inspections and maintenance is appropriate or needs to be adjusted. And so that's one fee that needs to be updated. The other one is for the developer and the new installations. That was last updated in twenty twenty. And so those um fees are based on the old or the the current devices. And but the new regulation requires a different device, different cost. So we will need to update that fee as well. And within that, that those two fees, and specifically the update of the developer fees, we could potentially. Well, not for the developer fees, we'd wanna pass on the cost for the new development, but for the current installation. So now we have a third fee that we would have to develop and based on the different sizes as well. So right now, we only have one for, I believe, a one inch and um three quarter inch, but we need all the way up to a twelve inch for the commercial side. So we'd have to work very diligently over the next couple of months with a consultant to develop what the appropriate fee structure would be. And as we do that uh for the current devices and that third additional fee that we need to implement the program. That's where the additional discretionary revenue could offset some of those costs for those with current devices. Uh we also need to make sure we incorporate all the additional costs associated with the implementation of this program that are noted there on the screen. Um public outreach and education, some of that also includes ongoing education requirements. And so there is ongoing cost um regarding that. And then do we wanna consider even a new fee for that non-compliance? What if somebody has a turnover? What if we can't collect the revenue? Um do we put it on the property tax rules? What are our options there? So we definitely want to take a look at that as well as we go through the fee study. Our proposal is to issue um or get um some quotes pretty quickly here in order to get a consultant onboarded. And potentially give you some options in May or June uh for fee structures. And um because without that, they can't continue on with our program. It's kind of the first step. And then from there, once we determine what those fees look like, we can start with the educational component and the implementation. Um I agree with Jim that we could certainly start looking, and we have been looking already at the cost and any potential bulk discounts for these new devices. Um just making sure we have the appropriate storage for them and maybe not releasing them. and maybe not releasing them until we have the new fees in place, so that we're recuperating those costs at the board's direction. I don't know, I'm gonna stop there, and that's really all I had to say regarding the fee study, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
The only thing I would, I would say on the fee structure, on the new fee analysis, I, I, you know, you, you look at one seminar, you're, you're an expert, but I did watch those two or three BBK seminars on litigating proof, your fee structures. And there is, and I, so I'm assuming that whoever you're gonna use is gonna be tightly wound up with BBK, among others, to make sure that we follow all these new regulations and new rulings that have come down from the, from the courts, because it's much more complicated than what we used to believe it was. So I just, I just wanna throw that out there and mention that's a concern.
Right, and that's one of the reasons why we quickly reached out to BBK and Lutfi specifically and Jeff regarding the different options that we're presenting to you today to make sure they were in alignment with what the law requires. Yes, we, we would certainly involve BBK in any of our analysis before it's presented to the board.
Yeah, because, you know, they will be challenged, so.
And there's no talk of getting any money from the state?
No, we did reach out to potentially Woodward and Curran, just to talk about potential grant funding. They've already said the state has clawed back some funding, and we don't anticipate that there'll be any additional funding. They've actually, we've been working on the CIP side really closely with funding that is expiring and not being extended. And so we don't anticipate there being any funding for this program from the state.
Yeah, there was difficulty, I guess, in Sacramento in getting a balanced budget this year. And of course, all of the concern that's now taking place because of the wildfires is gonna create even a bigger need for state funds, so.
But I mean, most of the water districts are just going through exercises like we are right now. And so when everybody finds out how much it's gonna cost, that may change some things, because, you know, you're talking about some big water districts in LA and who have millions of people and millions of customers, commercial customers. I, I don't know how the guys, I don't know how they're even gonna even make all these. I don't even know how they're gonna make them all, these backflow divestitures, I mean, how, how can they do it?
I agree. They'll import.
China.
Well, that was great. That kind of wraps that subject, doesn't it?
So, so I mean, just to get, kind of gauge how serious a problem that is. I mean, so, so the theory here is that, that seventeen, whatever it's called, was, wasn't good enough, right? And so the single check valve wasn't good enough, and we didn't have good enough protocols in place, because we were just following the law. But the law, so they changed the law to beef that up. I mean, how big a problem is this? I mean, you think of all the problems in the state of California, are there really cross-contamination issues that we're dealing with?
That don't even have one. I mean, these have one. We're, we're making a double check valve.
Where, where it already has a check valve?
Where's the problem that needed to be solved, is my question?
Risk, risk.
Yeah, so they're specifically identifying fire protection systems, so they're saying that there's potentially chemical additives in the fire protection systems that we need higher-level protection from allowing, we don't want that to get into our drinking water system. The reason why residential customers can get away with a detector or double-check versus an RP device is because the state has identified that property with a fire protection system as a low hazard. Still hazard, but low, primarily stagnant water buildup. Not a primary health concern, but still a concern, and they rolled a double check.
Maybe I didn't know about. So you said that somebody who has fire sprinklers in their home uses a chemical additive?
No, that's for the commercial ones, and that's why they're primarily RP devices. The requirement for them is gonna be an RP, and the residential's gonna be a double.
Worrying about the stagnant water and the pipes in someone's homes getting back into the drinking water.
So we've all known about this for some time, I don't know.
But they already have a check valve, right? They already have a valve.
A lot of, a lot of developments.
That's supposed to work, but they have the single check valve.
The single checks. Not all of them, but some of them, where there's a higher risk. But, you know, with the fires in LA, does this change the priority? Does this change or make a different requirement or a more stringent requirement? We have no idea. I provided Sylvia a fact sheet on our system, there's a lot of people asking about that.
Yeah.
That's for your use. We also have a lot of PRAs and.
This photo, this photo down there, is that, what is that? A generator. Is that a diesel generator?
That is a generator, yes.
Diesel generator.
Yeah, it's a.
Two-hundred KW.
I would say it's even higher, yeah, it's somewhere between a two-hundred and a four-hundred KW generator.
Hard to tell the scale.
So I guess where I was going with that is, we worked, Ruben and I worked with Lorraine and Scott. We developed a, a fact sheet as well as a response to the typical question on our system, and we're working through that process as well as it comes to PRAs.
Yeah, I went, I went on.
If they wanna know how.
I, I looked at our website last night, I don't know if it's been updated lately, but it looked pretty good. There's a, there's that, you know, there's several things that scroll across the top of the first page. And one of them is emergency preparedness. I thought it was pretty good. I, I, it's a lot of the same stuff that's on the sheet.
We put it up in response to.
Yeah.
Questions we're getting.
I know. I mean, who knows, who goes on our website, I don't know, but, but it was, but it was, I thought it was well-presented information.
Probably about twelve people that go to the website, but Scott, if you have anything else, you might wanna come to it.
That is not true.
Well, they're, they're, they're asking, are we, are we testing our fire hydrants to make sure that they're, that they have pressure? I mean, we're getting those kind of comments, and so.
Valves open and close.
Yes.
But I mean, I mean, the prob, the, the problem with, you know, it, it, it's hard to explain the system in LA and what happened. I mean, you think about it as graphic as this is, if you have a PV sys, PVC system in a house and it's melting, it's, and, and it, and you can't get in, the firemen can't get in to turn off our meter, then we lose pressure quickly. I mean, there's a lot of different things involved, but we have to find a way. We do hydraulic modeling for fire hydrants on a smaller scale for individuals or something. But we have to look at something more global if we're gonna give them a response, you know, system-wide. You know, hey, our fact sheet, this is how much storage we have, this is how much production we have the ability to do. Here are different pressure zones, here's how many fire hydrants, here's our maintenance program. Like, you can't go into a stress test of the entire system, I think it's really complicated.
Do the, do the fire hydrants, are they connected to the same line as a domestic? So they don't have their own line? So, so if everybody's, if people or houses are burning and, and everyone's water is, is bubbling up or everybody has their hose on, that's gonna reduce this pressure on, on the.
Yes, and that's part of the problem. The fire, the fire hydrants are strategically throughout the system, but they're, the intent was never to have a engine on each hydrant working at the exact same time. It was more of a location logistics, right? So, yeah, that, that's a misconception by the public.
But you still want your tanks to be operating properly.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I don't know, Ian James had a pretty interesting article in the LA Times last week. And he had information in there that didn't sound like what I had heard before, but he said that that sand in his reservoir was a hundred-and-seventeen million gallons or something like that. It's a big number.
Hmm.
Because I had read earlier, it was, it was like one of the tanks, like one, but it's not one million, it's like a hundred, and it's been offline. I mean, I, I guess I want reassurance that we don't have massive part of our system down for a year. You know, how does that happen? And I'm assuming that we don't just take down our tanks, you know, for long periods of time, I mean, I don't.
We, we do not. And how many million, I didn't read the article.
Well, you know, it was, you can look it up, but I think it was, it was over a hundred million gallons, and that's, that's a lot. You know, and then they had the three one-million gallon tanks that were fed by that. And so we're talking a much more capacity than the original articles, which was there's one, one million gallon tank down. You know, and so you're, you have no way to replenish.
Yeah.
Well, as you draw down your, your pressure, your system.
And that, that, I, I mean, if there is something positive, our production is more than our storage. So we have the ability to, we have generators onsite on forty-some wells. We have fifteen that are remote that we can bring to strategic locations, and we can refill our storage.
Yeah, I get that, and you know, your reservoir, when you kind of do a corollary, your reservoir is the aquifer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is.
And we also have a canal system that we can put hurricane pumps in.
Yeah.
And a lake that we can put hurricane pumps in and, and fill up. A lot of people don't, they're not in that situation.
Yeah, but just the fact that we have over a hundred wells that are connected to this massive reservoir.
Absolutely.
You can, you can regenerate.
What do you, does it mean when you say hurricane protection, that means that?
No, hurricane pump, you can put in pumps that are massive, like the same size as a well. You can put in pumps that are five, six CFS into the canal and refill trucks very quickly or into liquid. So it's, it's just, it's an alternative supply absent our domestic system if we get into a situation.
That no one else has. That's a good, that's a good point.
Yeah.
They, they don't have that.
But just the reservoir, you know, we're focusing on tanks, which are wonderful, but you have this massive underground reservoir that's there to feed them, to replenish those tanks.
Hey, Dan, I have a question. Of the hundred or so wells that we have, about half of those we're saying have backup generators, so.
Yeah.
Is that adequate? Do we need?
Well, back, generators now are getting into the, I don't even know, seven-fifty million-dollar range. So it's, it, we continue to get more and more. At one point, I remember five years ago, I think we only had thirty, so we have forty-two now, so we continue to increase. And we have an enormous amount of standby generation, so. But, yeah, it's not, you know, it's a decision that was made at some point in time, that not every well that is being built has a generator. So I think as we move forward, we strategically look for alternatives, and new wells definitely have a generator, you know, to make sure.
Yeah, for sure, okay.
But I think we're, I think our system, you know, when we get into problems now, our electrical folks take out standby generators all the time when we have power outages. It's a, it's a weekly function, honestly, with IAD and SE.
You have portable generators.
Yeah.
Portable, portable generators.
Yeah, I think, I'm thinking of a massive, a massive event where, you know, one or two portable generators at a location may not be sufficient, so.
No, the, these generators are massive. The, the standby generators are massive generators, yeah. They can, they can run three-hundred horse, I mean, that, that's what they're sized for. Some of them are even larger than, we have, we have a generator that can run half a Dyke four, like, you know, eight-hundred horsepower type things.
Good to know, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I really do appreciate the focused discussion with our domestic fund, because I feel like we didn't, we weren't able to have such a focused discussion just on impacts that are, that are in the domestic fund and our rates. And so we thought this year we'd start with the domestic fund, and then we got this new cross-connection program, and we said, okay, great, well, let's also incorporate that into the discussion. So we'll continue on with our first budget study session focused on the domestic fund. Although you see me up here, please remember that we have all of our esteemed budget staff here and of the other department heads as well that are a comprehensive part of the budget process, it's certainly not just myself. We do have four additional public here, public meetings scheduled. The next one would be on February eighteenth, and then March eighteenth, April fifteenth. Then June tenth would be our budget adoption. We also have the June twenty-fourth meeting, should we need it. And then a possibility for a May study session as well, should we need that. On your screen, you'll note here that we just started our budget kickoff meetings with departments last week, and we still have a lot of work to do with them. So this study session has very preliminary numbers, you should expect them to be adjusted. And adjustments will be presented at the April fifteenth meeting after we have folded in all of the CIP and all of the expense requests from our departments. Again, very collaborative approach. You see a lot of all departments noted within these revenue and expense projections throughout the budget process. It's comprehensive, and again, we do have a public process during this time. We have a total of nine departments noted on the left with a hundred-and-three divisions. All those numbers get folded into the eleven funds that we will be presenting to you during these budget study sessions. Couple of things, if we dive back a little bit deeper into the domestic fund, we wanted to start with what's changed since we adopted the budget six months ago. So a couple of things to note here. We paid off the state revolving fund seventeen-point-six million in November of twenty twenty-four, so that we reduced our reserve levels. We also had anticipated a cost of living increase for four-and-a-half percent when we adopted the budget, but instead that was two percent. And so then that eluded, that created cost savings, about one-point-three million district-wide or four-hundred-eighty-two thousand for the domestic fund. Then we also received our final property tax revenue, and it was strong again for the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. A three-point-seven million-dollar increase overall, and the portion to the domestic fund is three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars. The, we have not paid the CalPERS funded accrued liability, the UAL is pending, something we discussed during our board meeting in December. We're working with PARs to identify investment strategies to then bring forth the allocation or the, the contribution to a pension one-fifteen trust. The budget is seven-point-one million, the portion of the domestic fund is three-point-one million. And so that may be reduced if the board decides that that would be appropriate. But we're looking to bring that back to you either in late February, early March with some potential investment strategies as well. And then last but not least, we see higher revenues because our consumption surprisingly has been higher the first six months of this fiscal year than originally anticipated. We're seeing about a twelve percent increase month over month from last year compared to this year. And it could be because, as you may remember, we were not even wearing sweaters during the holiday season. It was still hot, dry. Barely now am I feeling a little chill in the morning, and so that delay has certainly increased our water consumption in a positive way, which increases our revenues by about one-point-two million dollars adjusted in this year's budget. And so most of those assumptions we carry forward in developing next year's budget. So we start looking at projections for consumption going forward. We again start with a new adjusted baseline based on the additional revenue. And then you'll see a incremental decrease in the future years, just because we still have conservation as a way of life and other pressures. And as noted earlier, if you start to see pressures from other charges, we may see consumption reductions to offset those additional increases in costs such as the backflow devices, so. Want to be a little bit more conservative there and not just assume that, that additional consumption will continue into future years. And then just as a reminder, the volumetric revenue is about seventy-six percent of our total domestic rate.
You, but, but, so under that line, under that dotted line is, for year twenty twenty-seven, is what you're, that's your conservation?
It's about a million less, yes.
What percentage is that?
Do you know what percentage that is, David?
This works, I can move out forty and be basically about.
One over forty.
Two-and-a-half percent, yeah.
Yeah.
So you think.
About two.
So that would be two-and-a-half percent off of the average, which the average right now is twelve percent higher. So you're assuming, you're assuming that for twenty twenty-seven and then even more for twenty twenty-eight, that there's gonna be a fifteen percent water cut to, to, and that's, and that's, okay, so that's.
Yeah, so we, we, again, something we'd have to look at, continue to monitor.
Is there's a lot of wiggle room in there?
We could, especially if we see additional, strong revenues this year. We're seeing that delta decrease significantly in December. But overall, the average was twelve percent during the six months, but, but it did squeeze in December.
But you recall that, you know, we had a couple of state-directed reductions that took place, the first of which was thirty-six percent.
Correct.
Year over year, and then at least during the second one in twenty fifteen, we were able to go to our own drought contingency plan. And I believe, I can't remember exactly, but we had at least a fifteen percent reduction under that.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't know that this is that far-fetched from where we used to be. There's been some rebound in consumption.
Well, if we don't, if, if it doesn't, if there isn't a drought that's come down from the governor, then. Well, if we don't, if, if it doesn't, if there isn't a drought that's come down from the governor, then you won't see that.
Unless we raise the fees. And the fees being raised could produce a conservation, a reduction in consumption.
Raising the rates by five percent, you think people will cut back?
Not necessarily that, but you have to recall, we do have a Chrome Six potential additional cost in addition to the backflow costs we just talked about. And the Chrome Six, um, costs are not included within the projected rates at this point in time. Because we're not sure how we're going to treat it and what that ultimate cost would be. When we started layering in, um, potential Chrome Six, it just really distorted the conversation about the immediate need, um, with our rates. And so you'll note that we ta- took that out and because the volumetric or the, the consumption has changed significantly up and down over the last five years, we may not want to tie, um, a future bond issuance to treat Chrome Six to our volumetric rates. We may want to have that as a separate line item to ensure we have the revenue to pay off that debt. Um, and not be tied to the volumetric changes and not have big swings in our revenues.
Chrome Six is a whole nother thing, but what I'm trying to get at is, is when you show me, uh, rates that are five percent for this year and then you got a scenario and then twenty-five percent the next year, well, a lot of that twenty-five percent is probably in that number, right? In what you did there.
Some of it, yes.
Yeah, I think, you know.
That's, that's what I'm trying, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. It's, it's when you reduce that, that you, I mean, it just like taking that down a little bit is a couple of million dollars right there.
And, and you're not, that, the growth is built into that number too, right?
Correct.
So you're saying overall reduction in demand even as you add more meters?
Correct.
So I can't remember exactly, but I think one of the earlier numbers that, um, was being, uh, floated, uh, for Chrome Six essentially doubled the monthly service charge. And so regardless of how much water people use, they'll be paying twice as much each month just to be able to use water.
That's why people are moving to Texas.
A good point, Jim, to go into our next slide here. So we still continue to have, um, the lowest domestic water consumption rates when compared to other neighboring water agencies. Uh, the next closest one would be Coachella and we're about five dollars and eighty-seven cents less per month than, um, than their rates are. So then when we start looking at a.
Tell that from the rooftops to everybody.
When we start looking at this, a couple of things to, to note here when we're looking at just a rate comparison is, as you mentioned, we have two potential scenarios. Um, a two and a half percent rate increase or a five percent rate increase. You see there the historical average on the residential, the rate, the comparisons on the previous slide were based on twenty CCF. We are seeing a reduction, again, um, those were wetter years, right? Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four were wetter years. We did see a reduction in consumption, so we're closely monitoring that as we continue to develop our potential, uh, consumption projections going forward as, as you noted already. But even at a five percent rate increase, that is a dollar and eighty-two cents increase per month when you translate that into dollars under a twenty CCF, um, consumption. Just wanted to note it was under a two dollar per month rate increase, under a five percent rate increase.
You're, you do, the, the average, which is the mean, do you do a median also?
We have it, we can.
You know, probably easy to do, but I don't know whether the median's higher or lower than the mean. Just to get a sense of where, you know, our customers are, the majority. Above and below.
It's probably below. We've got some large properties out there, but for the most part.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah. Just curious to see, it's interesting to see go from twenty to eighteen. But, you know, you kind of wonder.
Right.
Where the, where the, or maybe do a distribution of where they are.
Sure.
Kind of like we did, what you did with the meter sizes.
The other option or the other presentation here is for, what if somebody goes into tier three? I think it was mentioned during last year's study sessions at some point that, um, if somebody was to go into tier three, what would a potential rate increase look like for them? What are their impacts? So again, under that five percent, uh, scenario, you're looking at two dollars and eighty-two cents increase per month even at a customer that trickles into that tier three, um, bucket there.
Yeah, and while we're at it, if we can look at sort of a census of, um, who's in which tier, how many people are in which tier also? I know we've looked at that in the past, but I haven't seen it in a while, just like, you know, what percentage of our customers are in tier two versus three, four and five?
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Sure.
If they're in tier three once in the month, they need to be put in tier three.
I'll give you.
One month out of the year, you mean?
Or some, or two months out of the year, because I think there's a lot more than that.
I don't know that we could.
We'd have to restructure our entire rates that way. I, I'll tell you, I had a leak, um, at my property and went into tier four and, um.
How embarrassing.
I know, and I was, but I was, I was really impressed. I got a text message, I got an email and I got a phone call within a couple of days. Um, and I was very impressed by the proactive approach that we have with our customers. And I'm usually efficient within tier one and two. Um, but as soon as it hit that tier three, I was getting alarms, um, every which way, so I really appreciate that and I, I think we, we do.
You should look into a flume device.
Yes, I should look into.
Cause then you don't have to wait for the billing, the meter reader to come around.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So maybe it's, maybe it's, uh, over half the year, you're in a tier three that you would. Maybe it's half the year that you're in the tier three or half the year that you're in the tier four that you. That, that you get put in that category.
When you say a tier three customer, is that somebody who's always in tier three?
This would be somebody that would be consistently, yes, in tier three as an example, um, what their month over month increase would be. And I don't know if Scott Barrett wants to come up and give us.
Yeah, when, when we, when we talk about like a census of our, how, what percentage of our customers are in tier?
We, I'd have to look that up, I don't know.
I, I'm just curious how you, how you, how you decide who, who's in which tier?
We could do it based on monthly bills rather than customers. Um, I think we used to say eighty percent of our customers were within their tier two budget.
Yeah, during the drought, we changed that to about seventy percent, I think, because people were exceeding their budget. But a couple of things I would mention when you're talking about the, um, projected water reduction, uh, use over time is that we do have the non-functional turf ban that's coming into place. And, you know, if you remember, we did enforce that during the, the drought. And, um, so I think then the number, you would have seen a much bigger increase. We replaced over five million square feet of turf during the drought and that was because the board adopted, you know, bigger, uh, larger rebates for turf. So, you know, we are, I think there is going to be some reduction there for the non-functional turf ban.
And your non-functional turf, that's commercial.
Commercial and HOA.
HOAs, but not.
Not residential. Yeah, so, and we are working with HOAs, kind of, uh, going forward to try to budget some money over the next few years to comply with that regulation.
That's a statewide regulation.
Yes, it is, yeah. And so in answer to your question, you know, generally when we look at, you know, in our department, I don't, I don't know but we could look at it any way the board wanted to, but, you know, we look, would look at anybody, like for a year, anybody who hit each of the tiers. So in our department, you know, in, in terms of outreach for higher tier customers, we normally, you know, for the tier five customers, we look at somebody who's been in tier five like three or four months over the year and to do some specialized outreach to them. Um, but we could set it up however the board wanted to.
Well, when we're talking about, uh, raising the rates and you tell us how many, how much tier two people and tier three people, I just want to get a sense because my feeling is, is that there's a lot of people in tier three for six months out of the year.
We, we, yeah, we could look at that.
But you, but these examples work for that, cause you would say, okay, well, during those six months, this was what would happen and the other six months would be the prior slide, right?
I guess, I guess so.
Yeah.
You know, I would just point out again, that there have been a ton of recent challenges to tiered rates. That I'm sure you guys are aware of, so when we talk about tiered rates and how many tiers we're going to have, I mean, I think when looking at the entire revenue structure, I, hopefully we're looking at it in the context of all this new stuff that has come out. And that it meets those tests because there's a particular red flag that's gone up around tiered, tiered rates, so. Just throw that out there.
Thank you, yes. We, we do not have to do a cost of service study for our domestic rates this year, but we do have to do one, um, very quickly. And we'll actually be starting it, um, in the spring of this year because we have to start with another new California state mandate to incorporate a consumption analysis within that rate study. And that analysis alone takes four to five months, according to our consultants to complete. And so we need to start that rate study pretty quickly here in order to, to meet our requirement a year from now to be before you with a, a comprehensive, um, cost of service study with the domestic, for the domestic fund. But yes, we will certainly take all the new regulations and get some legal advice as we go through that process.
It could even affect the structure of these tiers.
It could.
Absolutely.
So let's talk a little bit about our total operating revenues within the domestic fund. Again, these are some preliminary numbers. We'll be talking again about revenue projections at the next meeting and then one more time during the April meeting. Uh, we already talked about water sales, um, service charges, they, these, um, numbers have the five percent rate increase built into them. The property taxes, we are anticipating that, that they level off a little bit. Um, this was before the fires in Los Angeles County. They could have a potential impact on our housing market here. We saw that during COVID where the prices increased quite dramatically during that time and, um, inventory was, was taken up pretty quickly. Um, so, so that could have an impact on that three percent future increase, or three percent increase for future years. Uh, so we'll continue to monitor that really closely. The other thing with property taxes in this initial distribution or initial projections is that we have not changed the allocation from last year to this year. So last year's property tax discretionary property tax allocation was four point seven percent to the domestic fund. Um, and so that allocation has not changed and could be potentially adjusted, um, to increase our reserve funding or reduce the amount of, um, rate increase that we pass on to the domestic fund. So again, something we'll be monitoring and presenting. We haven't adjusted at this point because we still need to fold in our capital improvement budget, which is a large component, um, within the domestic fund. And as I noted earlier, we still don't have, um, expenses from each one of our departments that we have gone through that process of solidifying as well and folding into these projections.
What do you think it's going to be if you had to guess? Right now it's currently four point seven percent, you think it's going to be?
Go high, go high.
The, the allocation within the domestic fund, well, you know, you want to be really careful because, um, any changes would impact other rates potentially, so.
Cause you're taking away from something else.
Right, yes. And, and as we noted earlier, that discretionary property tax revenue could also be used to offset backflow service charges and other things. We have a lot of competing demands, Chrome Six, I mean, certainly a hundred percent of it could be allocated to the domestic fund and it's still not being enough, to be honest. We, um, are expected, uh, to have a slight decrease in investment earnings. Number one, because our ending reserves are slightly lower, uh, within the domestic fund. But both because we paid off the SRF loan this year and we just have additional, um, ongoing expenses that, that we are incurring. We are monitoring that as well. We haven't seen a big drop in our investment earnings. They're still hovering about four percent. Um, but as new administration comes on board and we have a, a flux in our market conditions, we'll monitor that and we may have a, a minor adjustment there going forward as well. And then, um, we do have the inter-fund loan that is paid from the West replenishment to the domestic fund. We still have a balance of forty-three point five million dollars at the end of this year. Does, um, mature in thirteen years, so that is ongoing, um, inter-fund revenue as well for the domestic fund. On the expense side, we are seeing about a three point six percent increase. Our salary savings we talked about, we, um, are anticipating not a, a four point five percent cost of living but maybe a four percent cost of living for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Again, something that we could potentially adjust lower, but we want to make sure we have sufficient, uh, to cover that potential increase. And then on the supplies and services side, we have incorporated three point five percent increase, again, very conservative. General manager noted that tariffs and where we source, um, you know, materials from could have an impact on those, um, costs going forward. And then overall, we take those revenues and those expenses and we start taking a look at our operating income. So again, um, the proposed rates are driven by those operating revenues and expenses assumptions, as you noted. Capital needs and funding and then the requirements for debt coverage within each one of the funds and of course our reserve targets. On the right there, you'll see that our maximum prop two eighteen amount that we could increase would be twenty-six point seven percent. So scenarios one and two at two and a half percent and five percent are well below that, um, maximum two eighteen amount. What's important to note, if you're looking at the numbers on the bottom or the right side of the, the page here, is that if we do not have a rate increase, we will have negative net income, about one point four, five, one point five million dollars in year one. Um, and then by year twenty twenty-seven, within two years, we would deplete all of our reserves with no rate increase. And that does not include any cost for Chrome Six or all of the other projects that are not funded at this point in time. And even with a two and a half percent rate increase, the net income is below a million dollars. And that's one of the factors that we wanted really take a look at and make sure we have a strong operating income position as we go forward in issuing debt in the next two years.
Cause we'll need debt for the Chrome Six issue.
Yes. Um, I also noted, um, already that the forecasted can does not include the Chrome Six. It also does not include current CIP. That budget will be presented and is being evaluated currently internally and it'll be presented in March. And those adjustments would be folded into the April study session. Also to, to note, we haven't adjusted down the current CIP for this year, which would also impact the reserve levels ending this year and then trickle down going forward. However, savings from CIP this year doesn't mean those are going away, it just means they're deferred into future years. And so we would still need that revenue for those, uh, projects that would be ongoing and not completed this year.
So scenario, I just want to be clear, on scenario one, that's a two and a half percent increase in the first year, and then the second year, it's what?
That one shows a twenty-five percent rate increase.
So it's two and a half and then twenty-five, twenty and fifteen. So, so the operating income, that little table above the percentages, that's, that's what those, those assumptions.
Correct.
It's laid out on this one a little bit clearer.
Yeah, I mean, I see it, but I just wanted to be sure.
Yes, and I think that you're right, the next slide with the reserves tells the story as to why. The goal would be even under that two and a half or the five percent is to be within our reserve target with, by fiscal year twenty-nine. So it's an incremental increase and even with those large rate increases in future years, it would take us that long based on current expenses, um, to get back up to our reserve target. One of the important things to note here too is, um, and, and I think Carrie's brought this up a few times during past study sessions, is this does not include all of the Sun City and Talavera future phases that are needed. We still have twelve potential phases that need to be funded at about a hundred and sixty-three million dollars. Five hundred and ten million potentially for Chrome Six. And we also have a long list of wells, reservoirs and booster stations that, uh, amount to about seventy-three million dollars worth of funding. And so we have seven hundred and, about seven hundred and forty-five million dollars worth of funding needed for those capital improvements. And so when you start thinking about our reserve. And so when you start thinking about our reserve target of about fifty-seven million, although it sounds high, it's not nearly as high. It's about seven percent of our total capital improvement needs that have been identified to date.
That's just domestic.
Only for domestic, yes.
Potentially getting bigger.
It, it, it'd be nice if someone would try to connect this modeling that we're doing with the decisions they're making in Sacramento. It just seems like there isn't much of a connection. You know, I mean, Chrome Six being a great example. We try to tell them that this is going to have massive impacts on our customers, and it just doesn't seem to matter.
Yes.
You're correct.
We have been talking about the affordability issue.
Scott, can you come to the mic, please?
Good comment, yeah.
Yeah, not putting you guys down, but it's just, you know, it, I mean, it's hard to tell the story, and frankly, it's I'm not sure it makes much difference.
You know, really, every conversation we have, whether it's with regulators or legislators, legislative staff, it's about affordability, and Chromium Six is a perfect example, along with all of our other infrastructure needs. But we could throw in the cross-connection, you know, and talk about that at fifty-five million dollars, and, you know, there's just a lot of regulations.
Which is a, which is an outcropping of the fire sprinkler regulation that went into effect, and after they put it into effect, they tell you it's really not to save human life, it's just to give you a little more time or something.
To escape, yeah.
To escape, yeah, which I'm not sure why, how that makes sense, but.
Yeah, so I mean, we'll, we're gonna, we'll keep hammering away at the affordability issue and making that part of every conversation we have.
Yeah.
And every comment letter.
I mean, they just keep piling on more and more and more stuff. We do it. The customer pays.
We need to be talking to our, you know, assembly members and, and letting them know. They need to go to Washington and hammer this. This is crazy.
Yeah, and those are conversations we're having.
Yeah.
And we'll continue to have them.
Most of it's not in Washington. I mean, the Chrome Six is not. It's a hundred percent California.
And my concern is with wildfires and
Our California assembly members, we need to be talking to.
And with the wildfires in LA, we don't know what regulations or what new laws are going to be introduced this year that would be new requirements on water agencies. So we'll keep an eye out for all that.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, it's frustrating, that's all I'm saying. And we're, just one question. On the reserve targets, we're increasing those two percent a year because of?
They're tied back to the expenses, um, and they're, they're different within each fund. We can certainly have a full review of, of reserve targets and how they're calculated during the next study session. That, that's the anticipation, is we'll talk about reserves a little bit more the next study session. So this is one of our last slides, is the debt service coverage, and this is again something we'll be drilling down a little bit more into the next, uh, during the next study session. Because within the domestic fund, we have the payoff of the twenty-twenty-two domestic note that is due June first. We need to determine how we're going to pay that off, or if it will be extended. Um, we're also reviewing the USDA-funded projects, the status of those projects. Um, we're having challenges with communication with USDA and being able to move forward with those projects, and we may need to consider alternative funding sources for those. Uh, so again, something we'll be talking about during the next, um, study session. And then we also already have programmed into the bud, into the projections, a twenty-nine million dollar, um, debt issuance. If you recall, that originally was forty million dollars. And we decided the reserves were a little bit too high within the domestic fund. So eleven million of that was considered pay-go and not to be reimbursed to the district. Uh, but still leaves us about a twenty-nine million dollar debt issuance, and that's in last year's dollars. So again, as we evaluate the CIP budget, we'll be, um, determining if that needs to be increased slightly uh, for the debt issuance, which would then slightly change these numbers here with, um, within the presentation as well. I'll leave that. Um, the next study session, I will note that I will not be here in person. David will be doing, taking the lead on the presentation. I will be on Zoom, though. I'll be at a conference. Um, and PFM will be joining us as well and likely Stradling, because they are assisting with the, the different, uh, options to pay off that SRF loan and what a debt issuance looks like if we needed to increase it so that the board can give us some direction, and we can quickly, um, do what we need to do before that June first deadline of paying off the twenty-two, twenty-two domestic notes. And then Carrie will take on the March eighteenth study session. Uh, we will be here, of course, to, um, to participate.
Times on these, yeah, is it nine AM or what is the time on those? Do we know?
I think they've all been set, right?
They've all been set, yes.
I believe they are at nine AM.
They're currently scheduled for nine AM, but if the board prefers a one-thirty or eleven or nine-thirty.
I like this time.
You don't like this time?
I do like this time.
Me too.
And our goal would be to keep them within that two-hour timeframe, if that's
Yeah.
pleases the board.
And we are alternating, so next month we'll be in Palm Desert. And then following month, we're back here.
Carla, uh, on the scenario one and two, just, I don't know if you were going to talk about that perhaps next time. I just note that the, um, in future years, the cash days-on-hand numbers are extremely low. And they don't seem to vary depending upon which scenario we're looking at. Is that something that's going to be addressed, or is that something that you're going to recommend that we just live with?
I don't know if I have an answer for you today unless you do, David. I don't think we, we analyzed that, or at least I haven't analyzed that, but I can certainly do so and we can.
It's, it's very low in both cases, well below what our target is, and
Right.
Yeah, and it's a calculation based on where we think ending reserves are going to be at this point, so the numbers are accurate. I think the two and a half, when you see those numbers slightly lower. And then basically, on the five percent one, they're a little bit higher, but it's basically just a representative of the expenses. So even though the revenues aren't changing a lot on this, it's basically saying, what are we spending? How many days' cash do we have to spend those based on the revenues?
So what is our goal for cash-on-hand days?
Um, I, I think as a district, we usually have tried to keep it within that three hundred and sixty-five, did like a basically a year's worth of cash. Each fund's a little different.
Not even close.
So no, I mean, so that's why when we look at it by fund, it's always a little bit different. Domestic has always been a little bit smaller, and a lot of it has to do with the fact we've really been focusing on the net operating income.
Okay, thanks.
Of course.
Yeah, okay, just make sure I have all these.
We wanted to make sure we did provide some detail behind the numbers for you initially, and we'll continue to do so as we go forward.
Yep, that's it.
That it?
Yeah.
Well done, within the two hours.
Yeah, no, good work. It's well-presented. Just a little depressing.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have, uh, any other business? I don't think we do, so we are, we are adjourned.